This is the regular session of the Mayor and Council of the City of Bisbee County Cochees in the state of Arizona today on Tuesday, September 4th, 2018 at 7:00 p.m. The Cochees County Board of Supervisors here in the building, 1415 Melanie Lane, building G in Bisbee, Arizona. Ms. Cornado.
Councilmember Allen Lightfoot, here. Councilmember Joe Hanson, here. Councilmember Frank Davis, excused. Mayor David M. Smith, here. Councilmember Bill Higgins. Councilmember Bill Higgins, here. Mayor Pro Tem Dumbistan, here. Councilmember Nate Lindstrom, here. City staff, Robert Smith, city manager. Ashley Cornado, city clerk. Tony Wong, interim operations manager. Albert E. Chubb, police chief. Frank Hanson, city attorneys.
Thank you, ma'am. For tonight's meeting, I'd like a moment of silence to reflect upon the nation and Arizona's laws of the great statesmen and the integrity of the Senate of John McCain. Thank you. Would you please stand up for the question, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks so much. Welcome, everyone. Elections are over. We're off and running. I want to welcome Ms. Giacomoino and Ms. Johns. If you can stand up. People, thank you and congratulations. Ms. Giacomoino, Ms. Johns, I'd ask that your email address is be activated and that effective immediately you start proceeding all the council correspondence so that when the time comes in a couple of months, you'll be more often operating, ready to slip right in. So that should be done right away. Okay?
Thank you.
Of course. I'd also like to ask, under Mayor's Minutes, our police chief, Chief Chave, just jumped in here for a couple of words about our bill issue.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, members of the board. Most of you noticed when you came in tonight, there's a Bisbee police car parked outside that looks a little bit different from our other police cars. We entered into a common track a couple of months ago with border supervisors to allow us to get used vehicles from Cochees County and make them our own at a discounted rate. And we actually pay a per mile rate to the county. They continue to maintain those vehicles just like they are their own. They put our markings on and we get to drive and they cover our gas, they cover our maintenance, they cover our new tires, whatever we need, they take care of that in their price per mile package. So our fleet has been in pretty bad shape and this is a nice addition and we felt like this was a very good time to sort of rebrand our police vehicles. And so Deputy Chief Long spent a lot of time, a lot of designs going back and forth, trying to pick the right one that he felt fit. And I think he did an excellent job of putting that together. I'm a fan of the blue. Blue's my favorite color, so there had to be a big blue stripe down the middle of that. And then the levers on the side, they kind of look brown, but if you look real close, they're actually copper. And we wanted to tie that back to our mine heritage here in Bisbee and I think we did a good job of that and it looks really nice. So it'll be parked out there when you're done if you want to take a quick glance at it. That's why it's there, just to kind of show it off. And I want to thank Cochees County, their fleet management, Ruben Iada and Manny Gonzalez. Those guys worked really hard to not only help us put this plan together and do this to help Bisbee, but also they put a lot of time in to get those vehicles ready for us. So they have four vehicles that we've taken custody of. That's the very first one to roll out. As soon as they get the markings on the next, we'll start to see more and more of those floating around out there. So thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Chief. Anyway, if you take a look at it, look really close to the logo with the Iron Man because that's an actual photograph that's been placed there. It's not a drawing. It's really incredible. So thanks for that. We have no call to the public. And we'll be moving on to accounts payable, general business item one. Accounts payable.
I move to repay accounts payable in the amount of $211,404.36.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a motion. We have a second. We have discussion.
I have a question.
Yes.
On page four, under operational expenses, we have three different lunches here that total up to over $200. Is that a single person doing that, a signature doing this, or is it for a group?
Yes, ma'am. I had lunch with three representatives from Habitat for Humanity at the table. That was the $80 charge on August the 9th. That discussion was about using the eight acres that the city has behind Safeway for a Habitat for Humanity project. They want to do a low-income multi-unit housing project back there and they're seeking approval from Habitat National to get a charter in Cochees County because Habitat lost its charter in Cochees County and Tucson would have to create one. On page nine, I know one of these lunches was with the Pina County wastewater sewer crew that came in to help us with our wastewater treatment plant. I believe there were eight individuals at that meeting. I don't know why there are two transactions shown on the details. Do you mind?
Yes. I'm not sure why all three charges showed up on the same charge date. That might have just been the date that they were actually paid. The two wastewater were two separate days. The first day we had their lab technicians come down from Pina County to teach us how to do the reporting. We took them out to lunch. The second day we actually had their field personnel come in to show us how to set up all the field samplers and everything so that the following week we could actually not get another day in a week. Those were two separate days. I think just the way that it's paid, the Bank of America, it all comes in and paid on one day. I can assure you, yeah, they were two separate days.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, let me, before you draw on that, let me just, when we were having these lunches and so forth, that notation is on the receipt, correct? Let's turn it in.
Yes, sir. I turned in a receipt that shows what was spent and what was bought and the names of all the people that were there and the date and why I was, why I did that. So all of that paperwork is with Carrie.
And that's what's being sent out to members of the council?
I don't think that we're circulating the receipts and the documentation.
I believe we are.
Are we?
Yes, and that's why I was just mentioning that.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, well, because I did go through all of the invoices and I didn't see this.
And we need to fight out why.
So that's why.
And that's why I'm ready to.
I asked you, yeah.
And we would have answer for you this evening. Carrie's out this week, so she will be able to provide details for you when she gets back.
Right, and that's all I was saying, is as long as we're sending out the receipts out, make sure we're getting them all out, so that's all.
Okay, and then the last one I have is on page 13 and that's under, it's dinner for the Office of Tourism for $215.19. Again, that was my question. Is this one person, two people, is it a group?
No receipt without.
No, I might say I don't think everyone was, I didn't, I may have missed it, but I didn't see either one of us.
We're going to have to give you that then, Ms. Klein, because she's not here. Jen is not here. She would be the one to answer that question. So can we follow up, please, to get that information and get it out to us and figure out what that was? Yes, sir?
Thank you.
Anything else?
Nothing in particular, just one thing I noticed on this, is all of this, there seems to be a lot of more than usual travel and dinners and lunches and, you know, I just think maybe some of the watching in the future, there seems to be a lot of it, you know, nickels and dimes. That's my comment.
Anything else?
Because we have a motion.
Yeah. We have a second. Those in favor of paying accounts payable, please stick a flag by your side.
Aye.
Oppose, say a aye. Motion to carry six of. Does that agenda? A through L. Approval of the minutes of the regular session of the Mayor and Council held on July 30, 2018 at 7:00 p.m. B. Approval of the minutes of the regular session of the Mayor and Council held on July 17, 2018 at 7:00 p.m. C. Approval of the minutes of the special session of Mayor and Council held on July 23, 2018 at 5:01 p.m. D. Approval of the minutes of the work session of Mayor and Council held on July 23, 2018 at 5:30 p.m. E. Approval of the minutes of the work session of the Mayor and Council held on July 26, 2018 at 5:01. F. Approval of the minutes of the regular session of the Mayor and Council held on August 7, 2018 at 7:00 p.m. H. For G. I guess that is the ultimate, isn't it? Approval of the minutes of the regular session of the Mayor and Council held on August 21, 2018 at 7:00 p.m. H. Approval of the resignation of Jewel Maxwell from the Bisbee Arts Commission. I. Approval of a park facility roadway use permit for the use of City Park for the 30th Annual Festival of Lights on Friday, November 23, 2018, from 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. With setup and take down from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. J. Approval of the park facility roadway use permit for the Bisbee Coalition for the Homeless for the Fourth Annual Bisbee Mariachi Festival 2018 on Saturday, November 3, 2018. K. Approval of a special event liquor license application submitted by Bisbee Pride, Inc. for an event to be held at Club Kelman Char located at 33 Subway Street on Saturday, September 22, 2018 from 6:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m. on Sunday, September 23, 2018, Dorine Edwards' applicant. L. Approval of a special event liquor license application submitted by the Bisbee Council and the Arts of the Mountains, EPA Bisbee Mining and Historical Museum for an event to be held at the Bisbee La Sona College, 89 Main Street, Saturday, October 11, 2018, from 5:30 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. Counsel, does anybody have, anyone wish to move these forward or especially? Hearing that, I'm entertaining motion.
I would have approved the present, I am just A through L.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? We have a second. Ms. Cornado, please.
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dunn?
Aye.
Councilmember Lindstrom?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes, you have a six of. New business item number three. Discussion of possible authorization for the mayor to sign a letter to request donation for the 30th Annual Festival of Lights. Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a simple letter, a request for donations. I had some discussions with our staff recently on why we've never actually gone out to solicit donations for the Festival of Lights instead of just spending the city money on it because I think there's a lot of markets here and the adjacent towns that might be willing to donate prizes or something else for things like this. So I spoke with city manager, he suggested that letters should come from the Mayor and Council. So that is what's before you.
Anywhere to plan on where to use it going?
Whoever will give us anything. Honestly, I'd like to hit some of the merchants, not just in, you know, everyone goes over Bisbee, I understand that, but I'd like to hit, you know, you have two hardware stores that are rather local, if you donate gift cards or whatever else, you still have safe, we got some local businesses here. And I'd like to hit the big boys in Walmart, you know, they can either give us something or say no, or it used to be called no anyways. So just see that.
That makes me give us some money.
Yeah, that's good.
Good, good, okay. Any questions? Do we have a motion?
I would have approved the test letter request donations for the 30th Annual Festival of Lights to be held Friday, November 23, 2018, from 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. With setup and take down from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Your second.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Nelson Fager, say a aye by your side.
Aye.
Motion says aye. Motion carries, Nelson. Thank you. Item number four is public hearing and discussion of possible approval of a special use permit, 18-01, submitted by Albert Mendez for a 32-square off-site advertising sign at 10 Copper Queen Plaza. Mr. Esparsa, before, Mr. Hanson, should we have the public meeting before, his presenting or after?
I think you would probably want to have it afterwards because if people were going to make comments, they would have had the information.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. False alarm, I'm sorry.
Okay. Mayor and Council, before you, it's a request for a special use permit submitted by Albert Mendez. And for the record, Mr. Mendez has informed me that he is out of town for a medical appointment and cannot attend. He did attend the DRV as well as the planning and zoning commission meeting, but I didn't want to mention that, so I think we'll look at. So here's a photograph of the building where the sign is being proposed. You can see Grasp has a sign there currently, so it'd be directly to the right of that, approximately the same size. So currently, the reason this is coming before the council is the way the code is written up that any sign that's an off-site advertising sign and it's less than 50 square feet would have to go through the special use permit process. So the first stop was at the design review board, but if you want to advance them, let's go on to the next. So here's the actual sign that's being requested, like I said, 32 square feet, but it did have to stop first at the design review board and they have to make some sort of determination that does in compliance with the district guidelines. So if we do July 5, this one now went before the DRV. The DRV did review the request and they did recommend, it's the planning and zoning commission, that the sign would be permitted. That then followed to the planning and zoning commission that went to them on August 16. The public hearing was held and again, the request was considered by the planning and zoning commission and they did make a recommendation. But in that review, certainly staff in place, there are seven criteria that staff looks at for determining the appropriateness of a special use permit. So I did identify, you know, compliance with the zoning district, well, clearly this is a commercial advertisement, commercial zones, so there's not a conflict there. Compliance with site development standards. A sign up to 50 square feet would be permitted, this is at 32 square feet, so there's no conflict there. Off-site impacts, really did not determine that there would be any real offset, I mean, any impacts, you know, within the historic district. I think again, with the existing sign that's already in the building and it's not out of character to have this sign being requested. And as far as public input, did notify all of the property owners within 300 feet of this request, so I did send out letters and did not get any comments back, if I recall, both at DRV as well as the planning commission, there was no objections to the opposition to the request. And also, as far as the analysis, again, didn't determine there would be any negative impacts within historic district. And again, just as a consideration, certainly with the requests that come in, if there's numerous requests, certainly council want to consider how that will impact the visual appeal of the historic district. So I just, I mentioned that. And again, with public comments, we did, like I said, letters were sent out, posted the property, made sure it was on the city's websites. So again, making sure the public had an ample opportunity to comment on the request. And then finally, the planning commission did forward a recommendation, it was unanimous for the approval of this special use request for this 32-square off-site advertising sign.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Counsel, any questions to Mr. Esparsa? Hearing that, over the public hearing, public hearing is open. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this special use permit? Again, anyone wishing to speak in favor? Hearing none. Is there anyone that wishes to speak against this? Please.
Hello, bring my friend's neighborhood. I'm not actually against a whole son of concept of a sign being designed for your advertising, but my personal opinion is that it would have been kind of nice if you could have used an old plumbing wrench and could have used a design that would reflect the antique nature of our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishes to speak against this permit? Hearing none. Ms. Cornado, have you received any emails, phone calls, or written mail regarding this issue?
No, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Hearing is not closed. Do we have a motion, Council?
I move to approve special use permit 18-01 for a 32-square, 32-square feet off-site advertising sign to be located at number 10 Copper Queen Plaza.
Thank you. I'll second that. Ms. Cornado, would you call for?
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dunn?
Aye.
Councilmember Lindstrom?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes, you have a six of. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Esparsa, as always. Item number five, discussion of possible direction of staff regarding a petition submitted by Donald Hill concerning insurance monies for the city hall fire. Mr. Evans, you start to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. There's been a number of people that approached me about this fire insurance money being placed into a special fund, whether it be the capital improvements fund or a fund that is absolutely, a special fund that is designated for the rebuilding of the city hall rather than it just being placed in the general fund. And the concerns have been, or the suggestions have been, that it's just going to be easier for the purpose of donations that might be received that would go directly into that special fund or for future grants that would be received that would be directed right into that special revenue fund rather than into the general fund and then transferred out. The public is very aware and interested in this one and a half million dollars and that it would be just easier for the public to be informed as to the expenses and the revenues that are coming out of that insurance money. And I just would ask if the city manager has any comments or questions, or the question would be, is there any reason why this would not be feasible to occur?
I can, I can.
Can I get an answer from the city manager?
In a minute.
Okay.
I can state that one thing is that it is a misconception to believe that we have multiple bank accounts, that something going into the general fund is, can easily still be in his or your arm for certain things. If you give money for pool, it doesn't go to a pool fund, goes into the general fund in your arm specifically for that, is used for that. So I'm simply indicating that there are multiple accounts that are set up with separate check boards and separate expenditures and things like that. That's what accounting does. That's why everything is a charter accounts and actual account numbers to go from because it is continually monitored. So I just want to that to make for other people that don't know that, I want to make sure that they understood that. Mr. Smith, do you have a reply?
Yes, Mayor and Council. The funds are being accounted for properly at the moment. There was a presentation, I believe, last week on where we stood with those. We can put the funds wherever council would like. We can call the account for the funds wherever council would like. It's up to council in terms of what you might want to call the account or where you want to put the funds.
The other point that I would like to suggest is that if this would be made in the form of a motion, that if a special account was set aside for, established for these funds, if they were used for any other purpose other than for the rebuilding of city hall, that it would be done through a super majority vote by council and it would be done under the terms of a resolution. So.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy. Welcome, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of this 99% of it. The reason why is it's really about transparency, to be able to track the funds. I know you get a lot of the financials. I get those by regular requests and it's really hard to see each department takes money out for certain replacements, other things come in, and there's never really a total running over. So in order to make more transparency and make it more easily trackable of what this important amount of money is for, and I guess my last reason is I really come back to our city charter. If you really want to believe in our city charter, there's a section under 606, which is special revenue funds, which states that the special revenue fund shall be established to account for revenues from either specific tax assessments, which is wouldn't be, or special sources, which are to be used for financial, specific activities and anticipated expenditures and shall not be diverted for other uses except by resolution and approved by a five-seventh vote. Any such diversion shall not be treated as an emergency measure. So under our charter, it's set up for this exact type of thing. It's a very special thing. Who would ever believe a city hall burned down and you would have money that was there? It would also give more transparency to the overall general fund. It wouldn't be shown as revenue. I know the city manager the other day just put out an op-ed. He did clarify that some of that, that the money coming in was part of the insurance money, but it never, it doesn't ever really lock out where if it's in its own revenue fund, if you want to put in the gap improvements, that's fine with me, or if you want to start a special revenue fund. But it's just, it seems like the right thing to do would give people a lot of satisfaction knowing in a way that people like me and other individuals might be on the track. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I believe. I believe, unless I'm wrong, I believe this poll's request was for six seven of, in my, the petition, right, and the super, and I believe the super majority is five seven is just stated, so. And I discussed that with legal and I think that we would have to have other groups involved to make changes to the charter or code, is that correct? Okay. You answered, yes, that's correct. Anything else I can answer, please, sir? Thank you. What I would like is for finance to provide a, I'd like us to consider finance providing a game plan as to how this is accomplished, remembering that for accounting, as Mr. Sparsen is saying, that we, this insurance money is there, we can call it the insurance fund, I don't care, yeah, and that it is there and that when the time comes to buy fourteen desks that will know exactly fourteen desks or five and that comes out of that, is that, can I get ahead now, yes or no?
Yes. Because now it shows up the, whatever department bought it. Otherwise, a desk was locked for, for public works, one was locked for whatever. So now it's hard to see.
That would be coming out, that would become all out of the fund, though, not for individual.
Right. And as it is now, that's how replacements happen.
Correct. Counsel, does anybody disagree with that approach? Or can you finance tell us how best we'll accomplish this?
No, I think it's a good idea to have it into a separate fund just for the, it seems that the, there's be, some, there's be some citizens are a little anxious about it and I can understand that it's a lot of money and I think the more transparency that we can give them, make them feel comfortable, the better we are, as long as it's not unduly putting more work on finance, which I don't think it will.
Mr. Kenble.
I think John Hanson made a lot of sense.
Whoa! Whoa! Mr. Smith?
No, I agree, and I think it's also an opportunity to solicit additional fund prior to otherwise and certainly we have set designated, and other occasions designated, certainly some of the money for, as donations, and I think it's important to do that, so.
Right. Mr. Lindstrom?
I think it's a, I think it's a good idea, I think, what I was calling, what was it?
Ms. Klein?
I agree, I think it's a great idea and it's just another level of transparency and that way we can go right to it.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, but that would be a five to, a five to seven vote as opposed to a six? Okay.
That's super duper. The other is a super duper. All right, so with that, will be asked of finance to give us a game plan, which we will bring back and we'll share with the public. Ms. Pollard, does that take, leave your, does that take care of what you missed at this point? Thank you.
Item number six, discussion of possible acceptance of the Arizona State Library's grant in the amount of twenty-five thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars for the San Jose Literacy Outreach Project for the Copper Queen Library, Allison Williams. Ms. Williams, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, council, city staff, and members of the public. This is the second largest grant that we've received for the San Jose Copper Queen Library Annex, which is located at the BUSD Administrative Offices on Mondo Lane, just a stone's throw outside from here. And this grant in the amount of twenty-five thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars is a real boon. It's an LSTA grant from Arizona Libraries and it includes, among other things, a five-thousand-dollar book drop, two drop-off books after hours, furniture for both the children's library and a mini living room, as they have a Copper Queen library, four public computers, for a computer lab, a drop-down vertical projector and screen, incentives, more books for the collection, the permanent collection. And I was able to include in this grant additional funds for our YSI lending hotspot program, which I also received an Arizona Libraries grant for, but the NITRO Act grant had a deadline, a cutoff point, which is coming up, and I was able to extend that service and that program for another year through this grant, a portion of this grant. And so I just wanted to say just a couple of dates on the Copper Queen Library Annex. We have hired Heather Green, which is our grant-funded position for the outreach, which is with the Freeport Magrion Grant, a portion of that forty thousand dollars to hire Heather Green, who will start very soon. And we are planning on having an upcoming volunteer meet and greet to have volunteers at the Annex. If anybody's interested, please contact me. And I also just wanted to thank Councilmember Dunn for really working with us and spearheading this project as part of the Vicker Project, the importance of literacy in our community, and having a literate populace, and just how very important the library programs, the library services, and the extension of our collection to San Jose.
Do we have questions, Mr.? Yes, Ms. Smith.
Well, first of all, I think this is an excellent grant. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And now on the book drop that you're talking about, is it just for the books that are checked out from the satellite office or from any of them? Can you maybe just drop them off?
That's a great question. So the, the Annex is not a new library, it's an Annex. And by that, what it actually is, is a collection of the Copper Queen Library, an offsite collection in another physical location, just like biography, fiction, it's the San Jose Annex Collection. And in Cochise County, every resident can have a library card at every library in Cochise County, and so you can drop off all of your books, materials for the Copper Queen Library. And we do do in the library loan, so we do have residents here in San Jose who might get books from other libraries within the county, it can be dropped off there too. We already have one at the Super Center and we have one in Warren, which is still behind the fence at City Hall, however, it is in the process of being moved down the block to right outside of Boys and Girls' School. We already have that permissioned, so there, these are drop-off points. And actually, in the, there in near future, probably at the beginning of the year, the county will go to a one-card, library card system, and you will pick your home library, but, so you don't have one card in the county.
Well, it's a good idea, because I've got from...
Yep, it's gonna be awesome.
That's great. And then, I don't know if you mentioned, or I missed, that the employee that's going to be there, will this employ full-time or part-time?
Uh, this is a part-time position, nineteen and a half hours.
This is the one that's been in the budget?
Yes, it is in the budget of its grant budget.
Correct.
Any other questions, ma'am?
Any ready answers, short one?
No, you're not, no.
I just want to thank you all for the support of this Annex. It's a big, big endeavor, but there are so many partners and all of your support is so important.
Counsel, do we have a motion?
I move accept the Arizona State Libraries LSTA grant in the amount of twenty-five thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars of the San Jose University project for the Copper Queen Library.
Second? We have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Cornado?
Counsel member Klein?
Aye.
Counsel member Hanson?
Aye.
Counsel member Higgins?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Dunn?
Aye.
Counsel member Lindstrom?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passed, adjutant. Item number seven, discussion of possible approval to allow the Visby Police Department to purchase two BHFF seventy-ten T portable keypad radios and two BHFP twenty-five F seventy-five-ten T mobile radios from Eleven Communications to include charger, doctor's docking station, antennas and warranty using our available state RECO funds in the amount of five thousand eight hundred eighty-seven dollars and ninety-six cents, which is the state contract price. Mr. Chief Chatter?
Thank you, mayor, council members of the public. Just as you read, you know, currently our, our current stock of tape radios, mobile or portable radios, majority of them coming up on the ten-year mark, have already been notified that they are end of life, they're no longer making parts for those radios. As they go down, if there's parts available on the shelf, they'll fix them for us still, but they're, they're no longer producing. So once the parts run out, they're, they're no longer any good to us. And we're spending money to pay, to fix some of these radios instead of the investing into, to some new radios. So our, our radio expert, Mr. Ebwening, he sees our go-to die for radios for, for the city, police and fire both, and he's even done some help out at the airport, Public Works. He, he's the one that recommended these radios to us. He's actually field-tested both these models. And the mobile radio for sure is going to be a far cry better than what we have now. The radios that we're currently using cost us upwards of, to the tune of thirty-five-hundred dollars apiece. This iCom's not quite the same as tape as far as name brand stuff, but the quality is still there. We'll be able to get a six-year warranty on those radios, so I feel pretty confident that getting those at least started to replace some of our stock, it needs to happen. And the radios that we put in the, in the new toilets, the new to us toilets, without accounting, we have to provide them our radios to put into those, so we're running a little short. So we'd like to, we'd like to start this process with the hopes of maybe over the next couple of years, buying a few more and slowly starting to phase out those older tapes rather than spend money to fix them, invest that money in something that also is going to give us a six-year return.
And again, these are RECO funds.
This is RECO funds, yes, sir.
Questions, counsel? Yes?
I've just got kind of a silly question. And I realize this is from, no, not from you.
Yes, ma'am.
But the mic extension cable and the command mic, is that supposed to be MIC or is it really MIK?
Maybe it's a MIC as well.
Little OCD.
Yes, it's one of these. It's a nice. It's a nice radio.
I have a question. How many total radios did you say you'd save?
So I'm asking for this, I'm asking for two portable radios, which is the radios you usually see us walking around carrying in our hand, and I'm asking for two mobile radios. Those are the radios that get installed in the car. Now, these two radios will be installed in the, in the Jeep Chiflone and the vehicle that I drive. The portable radios, we're going to use those sort of as field tests. They're public safety-grade radios, but before I make the commitment to purchase those for the entire working force for the police department, I want to make sure they're actually going to hold up. They're, they're not quite as, they just feel pretty light and I will want to make sure that they're going to stand up to the use that it has put through by patrol. They'll, they'll work good for myself. I'm going from one meeting to the next, I'm not really out on the road patrolling as much as I used to, so it's not as abused, for lack of better words. It's just, they're, they're safety equipment to rely, we rely on and they get used often, so they're, they kind of get put through the wringer. This is going to give us an ability to try these out and see if they'll work for us. If they do, the price is great, we can't beat the price.
How many, how many are you going to need?
Eventually, eventually.
Because you were, and the reason I'm asking is if you're going to be doing this for two or three years, and we know how many you're going to need, it's easier to predict.
Well, what I'm hoping to do is, is in a, in a dream world, I'd love to get ten radios of each each year. So we have fourteen police officers funded right now, so each one of us needs one. We like to have a couple sitting on the shelf in case something does go bad and have to send one back to be repaired, like if one on the shelf, put it back into service. We also have the advance that we normally have, like the fourth inch line, things like that, we're bringing a lot of volunteers and have put a radio into their hands. So ultimately, when it's all said and done, we want the fourteen that we would have, plus a couple extra, fifteen if you have the ECO in there, and then a cache of ten radios on top of that. Now, the good thing about this is that this, this is, they're public safety-grade radios, they'll do everything I need to do, but they'll also do everything the fire department will need to do. So I pass the same information along to Chief the Steel, because they're the exact same over. In fact, they have, some of their radios are even a generation older than the tapes we have. They still have some of their Motorola twelve-fifties in operation on, on some of their trucks. And those, those have been end of life for a long time. So this, this could be a potential for them as well. We have fourteen vehicles, plus we have several standby swing units we call, if one goes down for service, there's, there's other ones we can get into. And then, of course, the volunteer cars, we use the staff cars, support cars, the Unmars, things like that.
So this is a drop-in bucket?
This is a drop-in bucket, but the hope is, if I had enough RECO funds to buy them all, I would, but this is, this is the first step. And if we can start this and make sure these are going to work appropriately for us, which I'm sure they will, we can then start looking for next year's budget to try and get budget in there for, for five or ten more and then continue that process.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
I move, you want to, you go ahead, Mr.. Welcome. I move to allow the Visby Police Department to purchase two BHFF seven-zero-one-zero-T portable radios and two BHFP twenty-five F seven-five-one-zero-T mobile radios from Eleven Communications to include chargers, docking system, antennas and warranty using our available state RECO funds in the amount of five thousand eight hundred eighty-seven dollars and ninety-six cents, which is state contract price.
I'm second.
Thank you, we have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Cornado?
Counsel member Klein?
Aye.
Counsel member Hanson?
Aye.
Counsel member Higgins?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Dunn?
Aye.
Counsel member Lindstrom?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passed, adjutant. Chief, while you're there.
Yes, sir.
Item number eight, discussion of possible approval of MOA, memo of understanding between Cochise County and the Visby Police Department for management control of the Criminal Justice Information System computer operations. Sir?
So this is, is, because we use the county spillman network, we access our ACIS and CJIS through spillmen, and so we have to have this agreement in place to allow us to continue to do that. We access our state database, or we access the state database ACIC, ACIC through spillmen, and this is the MOBU that's going to allow us to continue to do that. So there's no financial, there's no financial impact. All it is is just saying that we're allowing them to, or they're allowing us to work with them and if anything bad happens, it's, it's a very closely monitored network because there's so much possibility for misuse with the, the state system. That's where we check for warrants and driver's license, whatnot. Every officer who's, who has access or dispatch who has access to that network has to be tested and has to, the cast will suggest, they have to have their background, fingerprints, all those things have to be in place. And this is just now because we're on that, their network through spillmen instead of our own independent network, we're just, this is giving us that.
Any questions? Any motions?
I move to allow the Visby Police Department to enter into a MOA memorandum of agreement between Cochise County and the Visby Police Department for management... for Management Control of Criminal Justice Information System and CJIS Computer Operation.
Senator?
We have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Flack?
Councilmember Dunn?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Uh.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dunn?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passed to you, Adam Smith. Thank you, Chief, thank you very much. Item number nine, discussion of possible approval of a resolution, R-1815, authorizing the city to accept a deed to Camp Nakow property. This first came before us in March of two thousand seventeen, when I requested the council allow me to write a letter to the city of, what should the city, because they had indicated that they no longer wanted to sponsor Camp Nakow. And here we are, just a year, what, eighteen months later, and it's before us. So, Mr. Smith?
Mayor, Council, there was a time when this property was held by the city. And I don't know the reason, but at some point it was transferred to what should be city. They've held it for some time. My understanding from the city manager there is that due to lack of resources, they're not able to pursue what their thoughts were originally for the property, and they would seek to send it back to us for safekeeping. There are some concerns about potential future uses of the property, I think we've dealt with pretty well between the two cities, and we present to you the opportunity to receive the property back and become stewards of this resource again. I've received inquiry from the DAR, who has an interest in the property, and hopefully will have the people and resources to be able to do something with it.
Thank you, sir. Members of the council, do you have any questions to Mr. Smith before I go to the public hearing? Ms. Lucci, chata, go ahead. Welcome, Ms. Chata.
Good evening, everybody. Why in the world would the city of Bisbee want to get something and not? It is a border town. The camp was campmilled for years and years. For all the years that I've been here. It was for the colored forces of Fort Chuca, because they went on the map to home. George Mirnapp was mayor of Chuca City for years. And the camp was deteriorated, it was under terrible. So, he bought it, and he started restoring, part of those buildings are restored. And I don't know what happened with George or whatever. But if there is grant money out there to fix it, why doesn't the present owner fix it? Bisbee has no business in Nakow. We have, we have very little money right now, and we have a heck of a lot of things to fix. I don't know, we have so many, very few dollars for what has to be done. We've had a catastrophe at City Hall, that building is built in nineteen oh five, when people went out and mixed in, it needs to be restored. If you wanna restore something, restores City Hall, really. I think it's ludicrous that you wanna go, then you're gonna have border problems. You're gonna have, the buildings that were restored down there, they have illegal campmilled in them. It's, it's a snake bit. And I cannot fathom anybody on this council wanting to buy something in Nakow. Thank you.
Thank you, just a point of clarification, the mayor and, what should the city never buy it? What should the city?
The mayor, what should the city initiate it?
Um, Mr. Gibbs?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I have similar concerns about extending the resources, whether it's the mental resources, the staff, the potential grants that could be used elsewhere, that kind of thing, to a project that is off the beaten path, has a history of being difficult to maintain, probably take quite a bit of things to keep vandalism down, keep, you know, various other things from. And I think it would be very expensive to restore. So, what I would like to, I propose that before taking on something like this, that there be, one, a very clear vision as to what it would be used for and how it would benefit the city. Two, there would be a strong business plan that is very detailed as to how that would be executed. And three, a detailed cost-benefit analysis that was shared with the public before, you know, taking on something that could be really just a boat anchor on the city and city resources. If there's, there may very well be, I, from what I read in the packet, I didn't see a, a solid plan there, maybe there is something in the works that I just hadn't heard about or seen. So, I'm not, I'm not entering possibilities or anything, I just would like to see a very rigorous examination of, you know, if this is gonna be a benefit to the city, because we are in very dire straits right now, taking on something like this.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Rosco? You can probably answer some of those questions, please.
Yeah, I'm gonna try. Mayor and Council, thank you for considering this evening. We did come back a little before you in March and bring forward a lot of answers to the questions that you have. Bisbee has never owned Camp Nakow in the past. It was first owned by the Newell family, who leased it to the US military for the construction of the camp during the Mexican Revolution. It went back to the Newells briefly, it went to the government, and was a CCC camp in which much of the structure of Bisbee was constructed from that camp. So, it has close Bisbee ties, stairs, the water control systems were built by the CCC when they were in the camp, at Camp Nakow. Went back to the Newell family in nineteen fifty, and the Newells lived there along with a number of people here in Bisbee, Christine Rhodes grew up in Camp Nakow. Then, in nineteen ninety, the Newells decided they were no longer able to continue managing the property, and they sold it to Vision Quest, a for-profit youth treatment center. Vision Quest was unable to get the necessary zoning that they needed to build the kind of treatment facility they wanted. And it was about that time, around about nineteen ninety-eight, ninety-nine, which I got involved with Vision Quest in trying to figure out a way to preserve the camp. At that point, Vision Quest had told me that whoever, if we could find somebody a good steward to take it on, they would be willing to pass it on to that group. And we kept, we made a, talked to the city of Bisbee. At that point, there were a number of other options out there, the University of Arizona, Arizona State University, all of them had stepped forward with interest. My natural considerations meant that that didn't happen. In two thousand and six, there was an arson fire, and five of the buildings were burned. And at that point, EPA became involved, because it was asbestos being involved in the buildings. They were tasked with the county of mitigating the asbestos and fencing the site, or the county would do so. So, Vision Quest said, well, we will destroy the site if that's the case. At that point, I approached a number of groups, I spoke to CIGO, who called Coleman Powell, a political man, for anybody that I could think of that might have an interest in maintaining the camp. And that's when George Mirnapp stepped forward, convinced the city council in Chuca City to take possession of the camp. We have a group called the Nakow Parish Alliance that then subsequently raised six hundred thousand dollars in grants to mitigate the asbestos, which is now completely cleared, to put temporary roofs on the buildings, to complete the fence, to complete the National Register nomination, and to complete a master plan, which I think all of you have received. The master plan looked at each building and determined what it would need to return to complete certificate of occupancy. That doesn't mean that restoration is the only option. So, at that, so, you know, we've been working with Chuca City, again, it's gone back and forth several times. And as I said, we got to this point in March of two thousand and seventeen, and then Chuca City, for whatever reason, a number of changes in their leadership, didn't complete the transfer at that time. So, this is just completing that transfer that was approved in two thousand and seventeen. The group, the Nakow Parish Alliance, would continue to do whatever we could to support this effort. We missed a couple of grants this year that were specifically for Buffalo Soldiers Organization. So, there really is money out there, that's the money that Officer Porter's alma mater, Chuca, received this last year. Those grants come up, and we can, you know, we have that permission to go forward, that we'll continue to do that kind of support. In terms of importance, it is an incredibly important historic site. It could be part of the whole Bisbee tourism attraction. It has, it is the only one of these border works that was built in the Mexican Revolution that is still standing. It was also a CCC camp that was key to Bisbee's history. It has, there is a lot of military coast tourism out there. It is right up the road from the Nakow Green Bush Mammoth Sites, it could bring those in. But also, it, there's, on one hand, the full restoration of the camp, the use of the camp for art studios, or educational facilities, and libraries, and museums, and all of those things. But there's the other end of the spectrum, which we just maintain it, and we have a site that tracks towards something like Fort Booney. At this point, in terms of costs, the only thing that Chuca City has been paying for a number of years is the electric bill for the streetlights, which, my understanding, in the past, has been about eight hundred dollars a year. About once a year, the proper.